Can you hear me?
Yeah, once I put it on speaker.
There we go.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order. First thing we added on the agenda is Ron wants to do a presentation. So you're on.
I was passed.
Yeah. Oh, take your time.
Okay. Of course, you all, if you don't know me, I'm Ron Lahoot. And I'm here on behalf of the Class of '76 to request that the school board consider renaming the Daisy Bronson Middle School to Pierre Laffitte Middle School. This dedication would be to honor a teacher who you all know dedicated 43 years of his life to the students of LHS. Through his teaching, coaching, mentoring, and friendships, he enriched the lives of thousands of Littleton students. I happen to be one of those students. I had the privilege of first meeting Mr. Laffitte at Remick Park when he was the park rec director. I later had him as a junior high science teacher, and then as a class advisor from 1972 to 1976. As class president for those four years, Mr. Laffitte taught me how to be a leader and instilled in me many life lessons that greatly impact me today. This is just a short list of how Mr. Laffitte served the school and community. He was middle school science teacher for eight years, social studies teacher for 35 years, named Teacher of the Year for both high school and middle school, class advisor to the Class of '76 and the Class of '81, and the middle school advisor for 25 years, middle school and high school basketball coach with three Class M state championship titles, twice named Coach of the Year, advisor to the Youth and Government Club, which he was recognized and awarded an award for 25 years of service, athletic and co-curricular director of the middle school for over 30 years, as well as AD for the high school for a short time, broadcast basketball and football games on WLTN with Johnny Simon for 31 years, started the daycare program as rec director at Remick Park, which is still operating today 25 years later, and served as park commissioner for three years and ballot clerk for 40 years, as well as coaching Little League, baseball, and rec basketball. Those are just a few highlights. I could go on, there's like three pages of things that Pierre did while at Daisy Bronson. He was the recipient of many teaching and coaching awards. Pierre Laffitte's contribution to our Littleton youth alone make him worthy of having a school named after him. As Brian Ward said, he wasn't just a teacher, he was a friend to many people and someone they liked to see. Every community could use 100 more like him. It is with great passion that I request the board to make a motion to consider renaming Daisy Bronson Middle School to the Pierre Laffitte Middle School. Like Daisy Bronson, who was a beloved teacher and who retired in 1951, and ironically also taught at the junior high for 43 years, Pierre Laffitte has followed in her footsteps 20 years later. If this request is approved, my wishes would be to have a dedication ceremony near the end of May. The Class of '76 is prepared to take on any costs associated with the installation of any lettering and a plaque, and we will also be responsible for catering an event. I have some mockups, and they're very rough, of a plaque that would go near the entrance to Daisy Bronson or where we decided that would go, and also the lettering. You can pass it around. And of course, it would be the same as the metal lettering that we have now, just, and then this is the entrance to the school, and then this is very rough idea of a plaque. And I also have, for those who want to know a little more about Daisy Bronson, because the only thing I could really find on her was in Jack Colby's book, The History of Littleton. Thank you.
I'm looking at, got a great idea.
Ron, have you done any investigation on the Bronson family, how they would feel about that if they're still relatives in the area?
According to Mrs. Melanson, there was a niece that was living in Vermont that she connected with a few years ago. Other than that, I have talked to a lot of people and elderly people in the community, and no one really knows anything. Of course, if you went to the middle school, you would now be in your, you would now be 80 or older if you had Daisy Bronson. I just know that it was named after her for her dedication as an educator. It wasn't like a family that contributed money to have it named.
And any sense from people that you've talked to in the community other than, you know, ones that support, any negative feedback you've gotten?
The response has been overwhelming. In fact, my nephew just flew into Dulles Airport, and I said I couldn't talk because I'm going to a meeting. He goes, what are you doing? I told him why he goes, he was the most awesome teacher I ever, ever had. And it's been overwhelmingly positive from all ages.
It's also emotional.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Well done. What we'll do is talk amongst us and make a decision on what we can do.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Anything else on public input? Okay. Approval of the minutes, March 7?
So moved.
Because Ian's on the phone, we'll have to do our voting, remember, so we have to call out any.
Right. So moved Jim Anan?
Did you get a second, Kim Woodson? Yeah. She wasn't here, right?
Did you get a second, Millie?
I did, but Kim wasn't actually at the meeting.
Oh, okay, roll off second.
Okay, thank you. Although, any errors, omissions, or corrections? I don't see any. I didn't see any. Do you have any, Ann?
No, I have no.
Okay. All those in favor then, saying the names?
I, Kim Woodson.
Jim Anan?
Millie Nelson.
And then we get.
Okay, approved. Business report, we did the manifest, and the financial report, Tom?
Left you with a lot of papers tonight. None of them require any action tonight, however. This is all information. And it's actually all the same information, just sorted a couple of different ways. We've had several different types of presentations over the last few years, and this is kind of all of them put together. The top sheet does a comparison of this year to last year. So you can see that at the same point, at the end of February last year, we had spent $500,000 less than we have this year. The primary driver there is special projects down under the 2,600s, because we didn't have the playground and the unit ventilators and the multipurpose room roof and bathroom renovations last year. So those are all this year's, and that's a good portion of it. The other major driver of that is the salaries and benefits that were expected. Isn't that $200,000 at the top? If you flip to the second page, that's simply the current versus the budget, with encumbrance included in the totals, but no recognition of anticipated expenditures or anything else. So that's just a snapshot. If you looked at the 43-page reports, those are the totals that you would see. And that shows we're presently $918,000 under budget. With, what, four months to go?
Did I need to write to say that we were $918,000 under budget?
Yes, ma'am. That's at February 28 without any consideration for what we're doing the rest of the year. That's just what's already booked.
I don't see any of those reports in my files, so if you could forward them to me or get them to me?
Yes, we will.
Appreciate it.
We will do that.
Please, I'll take them up. Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And we continue on to the next couple of pages, we get a little bit of the magic involved. This one gets a bit more complex. We're looking at the major categories within each of the functions. So we're looking at wages, we're looking at benefits, and then everything else within regular ed, special ed, voc ed. The original budget, the adjusted budget as it stands now, because we make moves sometimes, the amounts that have actually been recorded, and the amounts that my crystal ball is projecting at this point, to get the current estimated variance by each of those groups. So for direct instruction, at this point, I'm saying we're going to be $206,000 under And carried over to the second page of that report. At this point, I'm projecting $466,000 under the budget for expenditures. Next page gets into revenues. Some of these numbers are actually softer than the expenditure numbers. But again, it's the best information we have at this time, and I'm looking at about $110,000 short of the estimated revenues that we did in September. So projected fund balance at this point of $356,000.
Where are the biggest shortfalls in revenue? Just looking at this.
So the projected fund balance, Tom, is what?
356.
And you?
We've not seen an awful lot of Medicaid activity. That's almost $90,000 of the difference. That's, in the one single area, that's probably the largest. Some of that comes in waves. So I can't say that we're going to play catch-up next month or anything. There has been a different level of activity this year, I believe, than last year. Last year, we had some extraordinary reimbursements in Medicaid, and I don't think we have that much activity this year.
Well, right, there's fewer kids that went to them before.
We'll continue to update you as more information becomes available.
Okay. Any questions, Ron? Thank you.
Anybody who wants to get into the gory details, I'll be glad to spend some time.
Okay. All right. The next item is under unfinished business, and it's a request for Paul Look of the Littleton High School, Jim Ruth. Who's going to take that one? You or?
I'll speak to it. I've had some correspondence with Mr. Broder. He put together a draft. I added some comments and took a couple of things out, put a couple of things in. He agrees with the changes. So the plan at this point is to put an ad out for the end of this week to announce the availability of an RFP package. In addition to newspaper advertising, I'm also going to target a couple of vendors that we know we've done business with to let them know that there's a package available. I won't send them the package unless they request it, but just to let them know that it's available.
So, Tom, if you put out the RFP for the end of this week, when is your anticipated drop date?
Well, we'll have it 30 days after the issue date of the ad.
So the end of April?
Yes.
Okay. I would anticipate that it should not be any later than that.
No, I thought it'd already gone out.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. Now's the time to be getting that out here and the bids back in. You know, here we are in April, so. Okay. Comments on that?
Yeah.
All right, we're into the reports. We'll have Kelly.
What about the retirement incentive? Are we going to discuss that later? On the new business?
Oh, I missed it, sorry. I was going to have it, you do it with your report. You want to do it now?
It's, yeah, we had on the agenda, and just that you have the...
All right, we'll do it now.
Yeah, the board, the board has the incentive that was prepared by Mike Elwell, attorney. I think the main, the main purpose here is just to put it on the agenda to give notice that we will be presenting an incentive to the, to the professional staff. We will discuss it a little bit further in executive session because it does involve identification potentially of employees as we, as we work through that. But I did want to, again, make that public notice that we will be considering that tonight formally.
And that, I understand it's just a one-time retirement incentive?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Now, Kelly, you're on.
All right. Looking at enrollment, we're up a few students from last month. We're at 128 right now for the month of March. For updates, I attached a letter from the DOE for Indicator 11, which is one of the things that we're rated on for compliance. That deals with timeliness of initial evaluations, and it was actually for the 15, 16 school year. And as you can see, we were 100% compliant in our evaluation. So case managers and Eric and I try to ensure that we're always in compliance. And the only other thing that I had was around preschool, just to give you an update, that Al, Crystal, Eric, and I met to have some preliminary conversations about the need for identified preschool students and looking at what supports and services and programs we need to put in place to really meet those needs. And actually, I just got an email today from PTAN, which is the Preschool Technical Advisory Network for the State, and they're having similar questions and conversations throughout the state, and we were asking for feedback. And on May 3, there's actually a forum that'll be held from 1:00 to 3:00 here out of the SAU office, where they're asking the same questions that we were talking about, you know, like, where are they being serviced? What are the services that we're providing? What are the needs? You know, there's like probably 15 things that they're looking at. So it seems to be an increased issue throughout the state, you know, really meeting the needs of those preschool students and how to go about doing that. So I don't know if you have any questions on that specifically. We'll have a follow-up meeting. We just had a preliminary meeting to start the conversation. Yeah. Anything else? That's all. Okay. To Ian?
We are on our...
Wait, excuse me. Yes?
Millie, I'd like to ask Kelly, because she could give us a special education enrollment average over the last five years, next time, or...
Yeah, I can break it out for where we're at.
Yeah, okay. Sound noting.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Join?
Okay. As of February 14, we are actually down three students. That has a lot to do with either people early graduation, or North Country Charter Academy, or transferring in and out. The career fair that was supposed to be held on March 14 was snowed out. As you probably know, it's been rescheduled to April 11. So I know County Board's busy working, getting the 45 businesses back to how the students go and get a lot of information. It's really a positive thing for them. It's stress for success, and they, they get a lot of information, and also it helps develop their career pathways. So I know that she, the teachers really wanted to have that, and the students were really disappointed about the snow business and all that, and wanted to have it rescheduled. So April 11 is the date. Under driving instruction, I just want to point out to you that although we're tweaking the new academic schedule for 1718, which was day one, day two, and we will actually be presenting that to parents that come through our showcase on March 28, so they can actually see what the schedule looks like. We also are sending a group of teachers, a group of five teachers, down to Conville High School on March 22 to look at what's called a task time advisory. That's teachers and students collaborating, so that the focus is more on the academics. So if students need extra help, we can actually make appointments so they can get to the people that they need to see during that time. It's about 42 minutes in length, so we've shortened up the class time, but actually lengthened the time where they could get the academic help. If people are not in needing that type of help, we will be offering enrichment activities and other things that they could take, such as maybe some mini courses. So we're looking at that as we're trying to finalize that schedule. Under parent and school community connection, I did add on also that I do want to recognize Simon's Market for presenting us with a $500 grant given by Simon's Market that's through ExxonMobil. The money is used to be used as a scholarship, either for someone that goes into mathematics or the study of science. We typically look at someone who's taken a lot of STEM courses or, or, or projected in that area. So we, I do want to thank Simon's Market for, for that, and we certainly appreciate that money that will be given to a deserving senior. Morning job with Joanne is actually going pretty well. I have, you know, not a lot of people that come in, but I have a lot of people that come in that want to talk with me privately about some things that, that they like to have a little bit of the answers on, or maybe some thought about, so I think it's, it's going really well. And I've also gotten a lot of thoughts from the parents who also would like to desert with the principal to come back, because the folks that can't make it in in the morning would like to come in in the evening, and so we will be in that in April. I am going to attend a principals' roundtable discussion at Plum State University at the Common Man Restaurant on the April 5, and that's actually for students that are graduating from Plum State going into teaching and looking for what principals look for for teachers. And so we actually put them through mock interviews and what questions that they might come up against. Our second academic showcase will be on March 28, it's from 6:00 to 7:30. And we are having, our plans for having a regional art show have been kind of scaled back a little bit for a couple of different reasons, and non-response actually from some of our folks, but we're still going to have a regional, we're still going to have an art show, so please come and support and see what the, our artists, we'll have them all judged by our local art decisions, so we're working on that. So it can only get bigger and better after that. Last page with the school news, lots of things. North Country Musical is actually tonight at Profile from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. So there's about 200 students over there now. It's a smaller, smaller concert tonight. Rebecca Hoxell and Sofia Mendez will be participating in the Littleton Rotary Club speech contest tomorrow for the first round. Jen Carbono, we have a few people going on NEAS visits. Jen Carbono is currently at Oyster River High School until Wednesday. Steph Potter is attending Stanford High School in Maine next week, and I will be going to Northfieldville High School in Vermont in April. I am going to also explore the dual enrollment program conversation with White Mountains Community College, which would, I hope, come with an articulation agreement for next year that would afford students with scheduling opportunities to actually go off campus and take college classes. So if it's not offered through Project Running Start, you could actually go to the college itself. So there is a, there is a workshop from 8:30 to 3:00 at NHTI that I'll be attending on March 24. That will give me a lot of information about the financial part of it and, you know, how folks get that type of program up and running. So I'm hopeful about that. SATs will be on, for grade 11, on April 5, and that will be in-house. We'll shut down a whole part of the wing so that we can actually, you know, simulate that, the importance of why people take that. So we have done that before, and it's worked really well. It's a little lengthy, sorry, Ann. Youth and Government Pre-Regisitation is in Concord, and that's on March 20, March 28, I believe. And Student Conference is in Concord, and that's in overnight on April 8. And the advisor, Sean Hagan, and our students are Griffin Northup, Avery Chang, and Joe DePalma, will present, be presenting their bills. Littleton Players will present Yo Vikings, April 6 through the 8, and we have all kinds of information out about that. And that cast is a huge cast that does involve Littleton profile-ized them. And literacy day is April 8.
Not going on. Any questions, Ann? Ann? Any questions? Okay, Al.
All right, thank you. March has been quite busy for Career and Tech also. Girls in Technology Day, though, however, was canceled. That was the last week. We're supposed to travel down to Concord and through NHTI. That is not going to be rescheduled. And also, it's a busy week for our CTSOs, all of our organizations, such as Skills USA, NADO, FPLA, TSA, and Educators Rising. They typically attend workshops and competitions this month, and they will be attending, I'll be reporting out in April, relating to how, for all they did. But tonight, I just want to touch base on the monitoring process, and I sent you probably too much information, a lot of information there, but typically every five years, CTE Center is monitored by the DOE, the Career and Tech section of the DOE. We were last monitored, went through an extensive monitoring process prior to the renovation in 2001, so it's been roughly, roughly five years. This is, they're changing the process. In the past, it was, on the information I gave you in terms of their requirements, you'd have to document in binders, and the DOE, maybe a couple people would come on site and go through each of those documents and make sure everything was appropriate. This year, they're trying to model the accreditation process and sending a team of teachers, DOE representations still, and some directors from centers. And they're looking at similar, no more binders, everything's uploaded on Google Docs that people have access to for the last couple weeks. So just quickly, I'm not going to go through the entire list, but what they'll be looking at is the types of things you hear me talk about every month. As far as the center, they're looking to make sure that we have a regional advisory committee, and we meet on a frequently, frequent basis, that we do have an agreement, we do have a 20-year agreement that's in place. They'll be looking at which programs cover which competencies. For example, we have to report all our student data to the state. We do that, that's through KATE. They review that, but we do that on a regular basis. You've heard me talk a lot about post-secondary agreements with colleges, post-secondary agreements. They want to know what's in place. They want to know our teachers' certifications, our schedules. They also want to know a little bit about how we, as a district, evaluate teachers, so we'll do that. And then every year, we do receive Perkins Performance data, and they want to check on that, which is obviously we get it from the DOE, so it isn't surprising. And of course, I want to know a little bit about our budget process, how we budget. As myself, as a director, look at requests and weigh importance, and that will be tied into those Perkins indicators again. And as far as from the teacher end, teachers certainly have to have their own advisory committees on each of the programs to look at those minutes, look at their curriculum. They want to know about program-specific labor market information and make sure that we're aligning our curriculum... we're aligning our curriculum with labor market needs, so we'll look at that. What we do in terms of, again, curriculum instruction and assessment, so there'll be meeting with teachers and reviewing classes, we'll be on-site April sixth and seventh, and we'll spend time with teachers, probably with some staff from here, also parents, there'll be meetings with students, similar to a NEAS visitation. So we're getting certainly all information ready for them, and we welcome their visit and see what they have to say.
Any concerns?
Not really. This is, this is similar to NEAS. You know, we think we're doing a good job, just having those sort of eyes come in and we'll get what we're doing well and what we should be improving upon. And if there's something we need to improve on, with support of the DOE, we'll move forward and improve what we do. So looking forward to it.
Thanks, Al.
My turn now?
Yes, Mr. Chev.
Just a few quick updates, not a huge report tonight. We added seven new cameras at Lakeway a couple of weeks ago, and we also replaced the sixteen original cameras that were installed at the, at the high school. Quality of the new cameras is far significant compared to the old ones. We upgraded the NVR for additional storage, which allows us to add additional cameras in the future. We walked both schools as well as talked about the academy to look at what areas there still are opportunities where there's, there's no visualization. And also, we actually kind of proved that theory a little bit on Friday with part of our Alice training. But we do have some rough figures of what we need for cameras in order to cover all floors and all areas that we would need to add. The next step would be pushing out the software. The nice thing about the new NVR is that it's all in one software application. It's one IP address, so the Littleton Police Department doesn't have to sign into two different things anymore. They can access all of the cameras together at the same time. He's very impressed with it. And then also it makes it easier for us, but you can access it from any computer, tablet, mobile phone, you know, anywhere you are. Power Teacher Pro, so Power School is our student information system that we use. They have a program called Power Teacher Gradebook, which has kind of been the standardized version that the staff has used for a number of years that we've had Power Teacher, I mean, uh, Power School. Power Teacher Pro is their, their latest addition that's going to really be replacing the gradebook feature. We have three staff members at the high school and one at the elementary school kind of using it, testing it right now. The advantage to it is it allows us to do standards-based grading that we have always used, so your, your A, B, C, F, and then also competency-based grading, which allows you to test for, for knowledge and grade accordingly. Doesn't have a percentage necessarily attached to it or, or letter grade attached to it. So the students that are in those second semester classes at the high school, the gym teachers in particular, the ones that are doing the competency-based grading, they were given, their students were given what they were looking for and what each criteria meant. So we're kind of working out some kinks and we're thankful that the four staff members volunteered to want to do it. It helps us from an IT standpoint so that hopefully we can rule this out to everyone. New access readers, there's two doors at Lakeway in the back of the building that don't have a key card access on them. We have worked with Platinum Security who did our camera install, and I talked to them today. They will be setting up a date to install the two readers so that that would give Lakeway three doors to come in from the back of the building. There currently is only one door for them to enter from the playground, so the safety. And then lastly, the Alice training for the safety. When I wrote the report, almost a hundred percent, we're still almost a hundred percent, we're at ninety-seven percent of the district staff that's trained, which includes parents, support staff, custodial staff, et cetera.
It's the online training.
That's the online hour training, correct. And the three that have not, the four that have not are in progress, so I would foresee that that wouldn't take much longer. And then I don't know the exact number of how many of us went through the live drills in the both schools on that Friday, but that was extremely beneficial that Dana and Greg, as well as the Littleton PD orchestrated. So that's what I have.
You want to update Alice a little bit for the viewing audience, what Alice is?
Sure. It's the alert system. It's been tested in different parts of the country, mainly Massachusetts uses it, but it's the emergency protocol system that schools would use, and not just schools, as we kind of learned on Friday. You can use it in your, in your everyday life, whether you're at a restaurant or you're in a movie theater. It just gives you different options as to how you can protect yourself, protect others that are around you, the different training that goes involved with, with each of the components. If you wanted even more specifics, I know Dana got to spend two or three days going through Alice training, but it's just a tool and it's, it's really, it's a mindset. And I think one of the things that a majority of us got hopefully from Friday was the fact that it involves a lot of critical thinking and decision-making, and there's no more standard of this is all that we do, there's, there's options that we can do. And hopefully we never have to deal with that as a school district, but at least we're, we're taking the right steps to be trained appropriately.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Anne.
Alice is alert, lockdown. What's the I stand for?
Inform.
Evacuate.
Inform, counter, and evacuate.
Inform, counter, and evacuate. Start from the beginning.
Inform.
Inform.
Thank you.
Locker. Counter and evacuate.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Questions up here? Crystal's locker here.
I could do my best to fill in if you'd like. So let's see, filling in for Crystal Martin, Dana Donpalo, Assistant Principal. Let's see, our numbers, three sixty-five students, that's down one. We had three sixty-six in February, so that means we lost one, but we're still pretty confident we can find him somewhere. It's got to be, couldn't have done that, talk to small people. As far as curriculum staff development, as we've talked about a little bit, on March seventeenth, Lakeway and LHS DVMs split the day with Greg Brilliant and with me, leading our staff in our in-service training for Alice, which, as we talked about, was the alert lockdown, inform, counter, evacuate. It was the alternative to the traditional lockdown, which, as we saw in the scenarios that we went through on Friday, the traditional lockdown in the event of there being a violent intruder in a school is just ridiculously ineffective. That was one of the scenarios that we did in conjunction with the LPD, wherein we have a person come in and use an airsoft pistol, gain entry into her room, and the teachers were, you know, kind of made to, to act as if they were students or just, you know, people in a building that were told to lock down. So that was one of the scenarios where they saw how very ineffective that was, and we added tools for the teachers to use so that in the event of, of the unthinkable, we would have, I know the teachers would be a little bit more empowered and have options and alternatives to just sitting there not knowing what to do. So I'd like to think that most of the staff found it empowering and that it was eye-opening and sobering for some. It was, you know, maybe a little scary at times, but I think overall, the majority of the staff realized the importance that this training has, and they recognized that it could be useful in the event that we ever have to use it. So we did, the first part of the morning, Greg and I trained the Lakeway staff. We had just about everybody we thought that we were going to have, and then in the afternoon, we went up to the high school. So as far as Lakeway goes, our second half of our in-service day was spent where our UDL team, that's Universal Design for Learning, which is an educational philosophy and approach that our district is looking at. Our UDL team down at Lakeway made some presentations, some of our staff that are, are kind of getting trained a little bit more in that area, made some presentations about what they're doing and how they're trying to help make learning more accessible to all of our students. I think those presentations went really well. We've been meeting with a consultant who's helping us plan our next steps for implementing more of a UDL take on our schools. And we're probably presenting a little bit more of that after our UDL team comes back from their conference, which is in Orlando, I think that's next month. On technology, everything that Dale said. We got new cameras, we got a new interface, and it looks great, and it's, it's really helpful and, and a lot more ways than just looking out for bad guys. And facilities news, we got new carpet installed in dark doorways, which is a lot safer for when students walk in with their wet feet. And the Safe Roots to the School Grant construction project is going to be starting at the end of the school year and wrapping up before our next year's school year. In personnel, all of our positions are filled and everybody is happy and just glad to be at Lakeway. In other news, we had twenty-one Lakeway skiers participate in the Roland Peabody Memorial Race up on Minersil. Thanks to Pam Lampid and Laura McCarthy for organizing that, and thanks to Laura, Damian Canuto, Casey Hadlock, and Sandy Porter for coaching them. A great job. I think that you guys had some photos there. I'm going to hold them up right now. Okay, later. So winter program is officially done for the season. This is the first Monday in a while that we have either not been snowed out or up at the mountain or out in the, out in the, in the snow. Thank you to all of our partners, our volunteers too, for making this another great year for the winter program at Lakeway. Special thank you to Deb Steinhauer and her team of Lakeway actors for their work and their performance of Macbeth at the close of the winter program, and I heard that that play is up for a couple of Tonys, so that's great. Literacy Night for grades, grades K through two was held on Thursday, March sixteenth, from five to six. There's a lot of parents, so that was great. The theme was science, so we saw everything from models of habitats and paper mache animals to, well, if you went, you might have had something that was cooked up by our first graders. They made orange juice bread all by themselves from scratch. It was really kind of cool to watch and taste as well. The Spring Book Fair was held last week, and thanks to two snow days, we're going to be extending that through Wednesday of this week. So thank you to Amy Cough and Rachel Drappo for all their work on that. Friends of Lakeway helped us out and gave us a great laser light show assembly also on Thursday, making that the most awesome day between two, one day a week, between two weekends there. One, which a program group was devoted to digital filmmaking, and there were two films that were generated from that. One film focused on the undefeated run of the Littleton High School boys' basketball team. Everybody clap. And another one was about Chudders. They were submitted to the North Country Student Film Festival, and other thanks to Amy Cough and Rachel Drappo for heading that up and working with those students. The Littleton High School basketball film's nominated for awards in categories like celebrating people north of the forty-fourth, inspiration north of the forty-fourth, and Best Picture. The team members are Camden Cook, Shad LoReggie, and Anna Roachforth. The Chudders film has been nominated for award categories of Celebration of Business and Best Picture as well. Those team members are Jace Carbonneau, Marley Nason, Cameron Payette, and Chloe Reeves, as well as Sam White. And if you want to catch those and the other films as well, you can go to the Rialto Theater in Lancaster on April eighth from ten to twelve, I believe it's a Saturday. And that's the news from Lakeway.
Wow, thank you. A lot, a lot going on. Personnel, committee reports. Thank you, Dana, by the way. Personnel, we have a mat facilities. I don't think we have anything there. And policy, we do have one policy, the DIA, fund balance to review, and you should have all had that emailed to you. We'll bring that back.
We don't have to bring that back.
We don't have to? I'm sorry?
No, this is a standing policy, it's been recommended by auditors a couple of years ago, that we do an annual review. So I would rule that we process this annual review and it should say reviewed and adopted where the state is, two thousand and seventeen.
Okay, are you making that motion?
Well...
I think you just did. She's right, this is a one-time thing. Most of our policies are brought back, we bring them to the board, we review them, and then we bring them back for approval. This one doesn't have, has to be, you know, approved tonight, so...
There's at least three policies in the system that allow everybody to know that we do have to do an annual review every year.
Okay.
To have this to be, this one is now, we'll get the other two later on.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
You're welcome.
So...
If somebody else wants to make that motion, that's fine. Yeah?
I'd like to make a motion that we move forward the policy DIA for fund balances for two thousand and seventeen.
Okay, second? Second?
Kim Woodson, second.
Thank you. All those in favor? All those in favor, now you say your name again.
I, Kim Woodson.
Kim Anan.
Millie Nelson. All right, so good. Okay. All right. Okay, thank you, Anne, for that. I guess superintendent's report is next.
Okay, hit a few high points. Actually, first two things I want to talk to you about a little bit, hazardous weather days missed due to inclement weather, and then makeup days, how might, what we've done so far affect the year going forward. We missed a couple of days last week. People sometimes ask me, how do you, how do you decide whether to have school or not to have school? I'm not, I'm, first of all, I'm not a weatherman. I don't have a crystal ball. I'm also not, I'm also not, Tom didn't tell me about that. I'm also not out treating the roads and, and working in the streets and the highways and that are in our town and the surrounding. I depend on others to give me information on that. So that's, that's what I look at. I look at the weather forecast, obviously, communication with those that are out on the roads, and then try, try to make the best decisions we can. One of the days it was called off last week, the weather report actually was right on the money. It's kind of how we thought it would be. It was gonna, we were gonna wake up to a day of no school with dry streets. And by about noon, it was gonna be snowing pretty hard and blowing pretty hard, and we were gonna, we were gonna be thinking, oh my gosh, what do we do now? We have seven hundred kids here, how do we get them home safely? And so, and unfortunately, I've been in some of those situations before. You know, it has been pointed out, I'm not in the Caribbean anymore, and I'm certainly aware of that, it's a little colder here. But I, but I did grow up in Western Kansas where, where lots of snow and lots of bad weather is pretty common, and I worked out in it, and I'm very, I'm very familiar with the hazards that come with, with bad weather. So, you know, we, we knew that on the one day it was likely that the big, the storm had hit around noon, one o'clock, and then we'd be faced with the prospect of, okay, how safe is it going to be by two-thirty, two-forty-five? We start sending kids home, and so we made the choice at that point, or I made the decision not to have school. We announced that afternoon a two-hour delay for the next day, with all indications where we were going to be fine for school the next day, and unfortunately, again, consulting the information that I had, it became clear we'd be, we'd have kids walking on Union Street because the sidewalks weren't clear going to Lakeway, and that frankly is not a, was not an option. So I called school for that day as well. And that's, and that's, again, at the end of the day, those are the calls that I make, and I'm, I'm very aware that this is an inconvenience for some families, I know that. I'm certainly aware of that and sensitive to that, but I think at the end of the day, I try to err on the side of safety for our students and, and also those who drive and work at the schools as well. Now, we've missed four days. The school year was supposed to end with students June fourteenth and teachers the sixteenth. We're going to need to be making some decisions in the very near future. We're going to need to be making some decisions in the very near future, assuming no more days are called, how that calendar might be altered for both students and teachers, and that's something we're going to need to make pretty soon, I know we're not out of the woods yet in terms of winter weather, but we will try to get that out, revise based on, based on those days we've missed, and hopefully, we won't have to miss any more going forward, and again, get that revised calendar out so people can plan accordingly. Next Monday, the 27th, New Commission of Education, Frank Edelbert, will be in Littleton, visiting our schools, starting at the CTC at 9:30, and we're really pleased to receive him, he's going to spend actually most of the day in our various buildings and programs at CTC, junior higher, middle school, high schools, academy, going to Lakeway as well, and so we're pleased that he, this is his second trip to Littleton, and we're certainly pleased to show off the things that we're doing here, and give him a chance to see our facilities, see our programs, visit with some of the teachers, board members certainly are invited as well to attend any or all of those activities and look at the schedule too. I attended a superintendent's meeting that we hosted here in Littleton the other day, at the Beal House, George Edwards was there speaking on behalf of NEASK, and as you know, we were scheduled to have an accreditation visit in 2018 with the, with the high school, we decided to ask for an extension, was granted an extension, and again, going forward, we'll need to look at NEASK and how that fits with our ongoing long-term plans and school improvement. One thing that they are doing that is something that certainly is part of our conversations is it is something that's available for schools to do system-wide rather than just one building, or you can stay with one building if you wish, but there's some changes they're making, and I think, again, I've been very pleased with their flexibility and their willingness to work with schools, given a number of constraints we have, budget, other resources as well. I won't speak too much to Alice, Dale did a great job with that, Dana followed up with that a little bit, training, I just want to reiterate that, you know, it's a, it's a program that we're doing in cooperation with the LPD, we're pleased with the support that they've given us, working together, I think the communication there is very strong, the cooperation there is very strong. We certainly hope that it's something we never have to do, but obviously, we would be negligent if we didn't address that possibility, if someone entered our buildings that was not, should not be there, we have to make sure that we have the best training we can for our staff, and to ensure the safety of our staff and students along the way. So thanks, my thanks, I know Al worked with us quite a bit, great Philly, and then, of course, Dana, Jim Paul, also was heavily involved with this, so my thanks to them for the work that they did. And the final thing I want to comment on is driver's education, and there's been a lot of talk, we've talked this program over quite a bit, I guess is an understatement, since August, and, you know, at our last meeting, I think it was consensus of the board for once we got through the budget process to move forward, so again, I will be asking for the board for the permission to post the program on school spring as we do with any kind of employment process or decisions that we make. That is my report.
Thank you for your patience.
Well, that's a yes.
The timing was a little off.
That's what's going to happen.
Assuming you can fill the position, it's going to happen.
Yeah, we'll post it as a, with a, as we do with any open, open position, and we'll see who applies and-
It was consensus of the board.
Who we can work, who we can work with under the parameters that we've established.
So by default, it should be fair enough?
I hope so, yeah.
We really, the timing was, it took a long time, but for a lot of reasons, and the timing was just off, we really did want to get through the annual meeting and the budget before we made a decision, now we'll just see what we can do.
So, in other words, there won't be anything done with the program this school year, it won't take place until next school year, is that what we're saying, or?
I think, I think, again, depending on how quickly things move forward, here's the thing, we've talked about different options, maybe beginning with at least something the last quarter, those after-school hours, here's the thing, I think we have to be very cognizant is that if you start getting toward the end of the school year, and you're starting, and teachers are trying to get the year finished, and time is of an essence, you start pulling kids out of classes, those are, those are all factors we have to take into account, but we'll do, we'll certainly do the best that we can.
Anything else on your report, sir? Dan, thank you all for coming, and I'll entertain a motion to go into non-public.
I'd like to make a motion to enter a non-public session under power of Act 2, Section 3 of RSA 91A colon 3, and the right to know law for 1, the dismissal, promotion, compensation, disciplining, investigation of charges of any public employee, 2, the hiring of any person as a public employee, and then, number 3 too?
Yep.
Matters that would adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the school board. Taking-
Taking Assistant Superintendent and Clark, please.
Okay, not the business manager?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, for the record, I'm asking him to go see his grandson's concert.
All right.
So, yeah, so, that's the purpose there.
Roll call?
He's already giving us all the goodness he can tonight.
Jim Anan?
Millie Nelson?
Here we are.
Okay, we also want to make note that we have Ann on the phone, if need be for a session, we could also call back, yeah.
Enjoy.
All right, thank you, everyone.